So I'll entertain him. Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion, how do you approve the item? I think the results of the one that's come up.
Yeah, thanks. So, a motion to approve, second by Mr. Bowman. Any opposition? Say none, so ordered. Okay. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Item number 20.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing to receive and respond to public comments on the draft 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, Draft Water Shortage Consistency Plan, and Addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, and resolutions adopting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Consistency Plan, and Addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Notice a public hearing has been given. Adjectives of compliance are on file, and we have no written communications.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. And there's no written communications, no blue slips. If I here wanted to speak, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a conversation. Motion from the council. Okay, it was moved by Ms. Prode, second by Mr. Bowman. Any opposition? Say none, so moved and so ordered. Great. It takes us to staff matters. Mr. Cho.
Nothing other than wishing everybody a happy Father's Day coming.
I'm just kidding. But I said it to my dad.
All right, we'll stay on that side of the room. We'll start with Mr. Valencia. Council matter. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on. We have appointments. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I've got a couple of special announcements to make. So let's get on with the appointments. Scott, are you going to handle that or Darlene is going to handle?
We certainly can, sir.
So you want me to handle that?
Well, they are the main recommendations.
Yeah, all the needs. These are the recommendations that we have. Okay, here we go. So here's what happened. We have commissions and board members, Planning Commission, Library Board, Museum Board, and Parks and Recreation Commission. And as people come and go through these, we have openings. And we believe it is also a great opportunity for people to learn about how their city operates, from the museum to planning. Planning is really, really intense learning of how the city operates. And so we have some appointments, starting with Ms. Daisy Macias is being appointed to Parks and Recreation. I know her well enough, I shouldn't bring her to the podium. I don't know if that's cool. Why don't you just kind of come up this way? I'll bring all three of you up. She was previously with the Library Board and is a longtime resident of Ontario. She attended elementary, middle, and high school in the city. She's currently employed as an account executive of both Republic Home Warranties and has a very, very long history. You're not that old, I'm just kidding. So yeah, I can just say a couple of words. Hello.
Sure, my name is Daisy. I just wanted to thank you, council member and mayor, for allowing me to just grow and continue to help out on the community. And I'm just looking forward to bringing new ideas and stuff to this new position. And I'm going to miss everyone at the library, but you know, you just gotta keep moving up. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll just stay there. Then next we have Guadalupe Anderson, who will be joining the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon. My name is Guadalupe Anderson, Lupe for short. I live in South Ontario, near Celebration Park. I've been married for 36 years, have three adult children and two beautiful granddaughters, and just want something new to contribute to the city and hopefully my ideas or I can bring things forward to make this a really great city.
Yeah, I'm really thankful that you're able to volunteer to be in this position. I think it's really important that you live in a newer part, actually, of, you know, sharing a ranch. And it's important to have you on this position so that we can have well-rounded board commissioners. So I also have this other stuff here. You served a long time volunteer within the community with youth activities and other things. You have a bachelor's degree in nursing from Mount St. Mary's College, and you're a nurse supervisor for the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. And so we're grateful to have you on board.
Looking forward to it. I appreciate your time.
And I don't see Liz Ritchie here. So Liz Ritchie will be appointed to the Library Board as one of our trustees. She served as one of the board commissioners to the Parks and Recreation from 2013 and 2017. She's the treasurer of Ontario Youth Activities League. She's also been on various committees of the school district, and she's currently employed for the City of Dublin Public Works Department. So we are very happy to have Ms. Ritchie on board too. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming forward. We have a fireworks take back. You can have this coming.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, do we need to ratify those appointments? But I'll make a motion that we support the mayor's appointments.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and we're taking a vote on that. Want to see it in lights. So you're officially voted in. Now we're going to get to our fireworks take back event. I want to emphasize this important event on Saturday, June 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're hosting a fireworks take back event at Fire Station 3, which is located at 1408, 1408, East Francis Street. Francis and Park. Yeah, it's Francis and Park, so it's that way that you live. And our message is clear. And I think that some folks out there have, at some point, wondered where our message was, but our message is clear. All fireworks are illegal. It's not fine for you to have fireworks in the city. It's not good. But we need the community's help. And so I encourage any residents in the possession of fireworks to voluntarily surrender them at our take back event. We're not going to shake you down, check you out, just bring them and drop them off. And this is going to help safeguard our residents and neighbors. And I don't know about you, but I'm already, you know, I'm closer to the Montclair border, so I'm going to say, but it's them. I don't know who it is really. But I'm already hearing fireworks, and it is disturbing. It's disturbing to me. It's disturbing to our animals. And there are people from all walks of life that these explosions are creating emotional stress that they don't need. We've never been, at least since I've been here, we have not been for many years a firework city. We don't allow them, and we're not allowing them now. And certainly with what we've gone through recently, we're really doubling down on this. So drop offs can be done anonymously, and I ask the community, everybody, to help combat fireworks. All of them are illegal. It's kind of funny for me to say illegal fireworks. They're illegal in this city, no matter what they are in our community. So once again, I'm going to tell you that it's June 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., bring your fireworks that you might have anywhere, or you might know someone say, come on, let's go dump them off and give them to the fire department. No questions asked. Right, Chief? No questions. All right, please, there we go. Okay, so now, here we go back to the other parts of council matters, and I'll move all the way over here to Mr. Valencia.
Yes, so I received actually a couple of letters, and they were from, one was from Bob Montgomery. He's a vice president of operation, Southern California Lancy Homes. We had a ribbon cutting at the Shea Tree Recreation Center. I'll just read the letter. It's my pleasure meeting you at the ribbon cutting. And then it goes on to say that he sincerely worked and truly appreciated the collaborative effort of our city and our staff. And basically in this letter, he's going on to say that Lancy and the Shea Tree teams really appreciated one of our employees and wanted to call him out, and his name is Johnny Reitner. And Johnny had actually gone to this development before hours, after hours, and on his day off. So both these letters that were received, and one was from the vice president, and the other one was for a planner, go and speak about what the City of Ontario does and how we work and how we operate. And it really is a collaborative effort when these developments happen. And I just give him many kudos, and I'll go ahead and hopefully I'll pass this on to Scott Murphy, and he can forward it to Johnny's boss. And then next, going back to transparency, we had a couple of speakers come up and talk about transparency. So after the last meeting, I actually asked the mayor to, I felt that we're going back in time because during COVID, we were fully accessible, people could access things online. Well, now we cannot. So the only way right now people can access this is if they have Channel 3 and/or what I did the other day. I had to come down to City Hall, just because I'm here, and go to the clerk's office, pay $10, and they gave me a thumb drive. So let's think about our community. How many people can't do that? So we need to make sure that this is accessible. But in doing that, when I purchased that thumb drive, I thought to myself, you know, I can actually, how can I solve some of this problem? So just want to let everybody know out there, you guys can come to my YouTube channel. I will post from now on, if that's what's needed, I will post from now on, I'll buy the thumb drive, and I'll post every single city council meeting so that the public can go ahead and view it, download it, do whatever you want with it. Because I truly believe that it needs to be accessible to the people that can't come here. So at the last meeting, Mayor, I did ask you if you could bring back what we had before. So, and you said you take it under personal consideration. Is there any personal consideration yet?
Is this an agenda I was talking about here?
Well.
Because you can make your comments, but I can't.
Oh, okay. Then that's, that's why I think it's completely clear. Speaking about, on May 4th, let's see, council member Watner, and then it was seconded by Deborah Prode, Councilwoman Prode, she addressed the city manager and the city attorney to go ahead and look at, actually bringing back to council the item that would require me if I run, well, I am running, but if a sitting council member would have to give their seat in order to run for the mayor's seat. That was a little over a month ago. Is there any reports? Because I sent you guys the letter, I'll tell you, is there anything to report back to the council?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Sure.
Just, just only that, there is no, there is no advice that I'm able to share in public, Mr. Valencia, but happy to share with the council in a confidential sense.
Okay, very well. I'll look forward to that. And then I'd also like to bring to the council, for council consensus, apparently we don't have a code of ethics in Ontario. And since, I would like to see if my colleagues here could direct the city attorney and city manager to bring back and force a look at and bring back a code of ethics. That's all.
Whoa, 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 don't be in the conversation. The city attorney can answer that. Or when it's your turn to speak, you might address a similar issue. That's all. So. Well, folks, here we go. Kind of funny. We're in silly season early. Silly season is when campaigns kick off and all kinds of crazy stuff comes up. And then usually, you know, you go through about two years of, three years of peace, and then a year out, and silly season really takes off. Well, we're taking off early this go around. This is silly season. This is campaigning and politics, and that's what you're seeing going on at our council meetings now. There's obviously been some challenges already stated in public, and that's okay. But I can, I prefer to keep the meeting businesslike and with decorum, and I'll try my best to do that. So when we see public speakers coming here making statements about the church and people in the community, understand this is silly season. This is all about politics, not about to me anything else. And we're just going to have to endure it for a while as we walk through the process. In basketball, when the, you know, there's a team that's feeling like they're probably about to lose a game, they run into what's called a full court press. And they start pressing the entire court, and that's really what this silly season is, is full court press. And I just want to tell you that I can take the shots. You know, they're getting directed at me here on social media, everywhere else, you know? And I can take the shots. I don't mind being the mayor of Ontario. You know, you're like the quarterback of a football team. You get all the glory and you get all the blame. And the reality is, I've always tried to be the team leader of a great team with 25 and more years of wins under our belt. And I'm going to continue to operate with dignity and respect. When people come forward and they want to pull theater, I guess we're just going to have to let them as we're going through silly season. But there is one thing that I just cannot abide, and I detest when somebody takes shots at people who are good people, honest people, respectable people, and for political reasons, pull out the machete and decide to start chopping them up for political reasons. And especially in this day and age, it really gets me because social media is a very strange platform. You have things that can be said, and we know that these big tech people can shut you up, they can censure you, they can, they can actually delete what you're saying or delete the personality. That's the power they have at the news. They have that power today because we've somehow lost freedom of speech. I'm all about freedom of speech, but we need to be honest and fair. So when I see a post on social media that is accusing me of not only being insensitive towards people, but that I'm somehow promoting a promiscuous or aberrant lifestyle, and it's being levied on a good, honest, respectable person for political reasons, I'm sorry, but I start to get a little angry. Because I'm not a racist, and I'm not a religious bigot, and I have no ability to be discriminatory about people. That's, and I'm nobody's judge. I don't judge people. I think I'm pretty fair maybe with most people unless they are not fair with me. And I don't mind exchanging thought in a peaceful manner. But when I read stuff about how just last week Congresswoman Norma Torres was photographed with this person in a group photo, "Mr. Mayor, did you inform the Congresswoman?" Is that, first off, is that my, I don't know what her agenda is. And is it my job? But I'll tell you what, the person that they're talking about, they say such things as, "I replaced a past commissioner with this gentleman." And they give reasons that are not true. They talk about transparency. The author talks about transparency. And it says that the person who was involved in something that is questionable by this guy who actually calls himself a religious conservative. So in other words, a religious bigot. I'm enraged. I'm enraged that someone would actually call out a person of color and a person whose lifestyle is none of my concern. I don't ask anybody out there, are you this, are you that, are you that, in this day and age? Why would anybody ask anybody about their personal life, sexual preferences, or anything else? Why? I don't do that. And then to suggest that I didn't do the proper research? So in other words, so an African American man comes up and we find him to be qualified to be in a position, and then I'm supposed to research him? Why, because of his color? For heaven's sakes? Not on my life, not on your life. I'm not doing that kind of stuff, and I don't support anybody who does that kind of stuff. I never have and never will. It's racist. And it's wrong. And as you, I'm not going to continue to read this nonsense, but just continue to try to say that, oh, my religious beliefs will not allow me to, dah 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 dah. Your religious beliefs, let me tell you something, I'm proud to say I'm a Christian. And the Jesus I know told me to love people unconditionally.
Amen.
And no other reason. And then to top it all off, I thought it was bad enough, as it was. So the accusation is that there was a person who was taken off a planning commission, and then I replaced him with this seedy person, which is a lie, an absolute lie. Person I replaced him with is an outstanding person who spends countless hours donating time, volunteering to do things that many people would never do, looked after thousands of people and made sure that they were fed and had everything else they needed during the COVID year. I could call on him in a second and he would be after some people out there got food because I would call him and say, this person needs food, and he would direct his staff to take food to them. But for heaven's sakes, he's black. Really? So then I read this later on, forwarded by my own council member. Sir, for your information, I voted no on this guy. And then they remove Fausto Reyes, who was my commissioner. Folks, here's the issue. These people on the dais do not have commissioners. Everybody who's appointed, as you saw tonight, sits at the pleasure of the mayor. They can recommend somebody, but they ain't theirs. And the problem that I had was that there was an issue, and there was a claim of my guy voted no on that. When, as soon as I hear those words, my guy on any of our commissions or positions, they're very close to done because you, the people of Ontario, own everybody, me, here, everybody. We don't own it. The public owns it, and they sit at the pleasure of the mayor, not a single council member. That's true. So when I have a council member forwarding or posting or liking this stuff, liking it, this racist, discriminatory, religious bigotry, I lose my mind to a little bit. And you know, I'm not sure what the repercussions of my diatribe and speech tonight will be, but I got to tell you, I don't like it, and I'm going to say it. I'm hurt, and I'm hurt for people out there who are alternative lifestyles, or gay, or what have you, who are hurt by this kind of stuff in this day and age. Hurt! You can't forward like or repost this stuff. To me, the only thing you do is condemn it. And I condemn it right here. I condemn this stuff. And I'm going to point them out to the folks who are here. It's that guy right there they're talking about, a very good man, a very good man. And I'll stand up with him in any church, anywhere, anytime. He's a good guy. Deandre Lampkin, the Lampkin Foundation, falsely accused of being, I'm to put it, he went to a school, and the mayor should have warned them. Of what? That he's somehow a sexual predator and a child molester? That's the implication of this nonsense that gets spread out there, and I've had it. And when we get accused of not streaming a meeting, and then nothing is said about this? I don't think so. I'm going to just grab my composure. Happy Father's Day coming up. I want to also ask the council. Sorry. I had another thing on my mind, and it slipped in my mind. I want to ask the council if we can reconsider our summer programs because we've made a lot of decisions based upon COVID rules that are no longer in existence. And I think that we have many things that we can do in a different way because the country is open and they were restrictive and maybe currently no longer necessary. So if I could get council consensus, and not that I speak to the city manager about adjusting some of these programs. Thank you. Mr. Watner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in response to Mr. Valencia's, I have no idea what he's talking about. He mentions that I made a motion, it was seconded by Debbie Prode. There was never any motion nor a second, so I'm not quite sure what he's talking about. I talked about the idea of maybe bringing something back, but nothing new action was overtaken, which is why the city attorney can't really answer the question because nothing was ever brought before him. Second of all, as far as Mr. Valencia wanted to know why we don't have a code of ethics or where it is, I was there when it was handed to him, so he knows exactly what he's talking about. He had it in his hands. Going on though, you know, the mayor mentioned some things that was going on, or were going on on social media, and it's real easy for people to hide behind social media. But right now, I, and by the way, I'm not taking this as a political kind of issue. To me, it's a very emotional compassionate issue. There's a Facebook site that's frequented by haters. Basically, it's a hater Facebook site. All they do is hate everything. And unfortunately, Ruben Valencia thrives in places like that. And this is people of like minds, they get attention, and they like and support Ruben, so Ruben likes to hang out over there. As the mayor described, there was a series of posts made by racist, bigoted, homo folks criticizing the mayor, criticizing, I hate to call you out, Deandre, but... criticizing the mayor, criticizing, I hate to call you out, Deandre, but you know, again, DeAndre Lampkin, based on the color of the skin and his sexual preference. Completely intolerable. I don't see Facebook. These things were brought to my attention by folks in our community, not my community, our community. I saw friends of mine that were extremely offended by what occurred. We have friends here or family within the city structure that were severely offended by what had occurred. It's tough because, because these are all friends of mine and there's no reason, and we heard one of the haters earlier tonight, you probably remember this lady came up here and said that, you know, that you can't have, children are in danger because there's a gay man in the community. Talk about ignorance, ignorance. So we have a series of Facebook posts that are there and apparently Mr. Valencia views these. And I'm just telling now to repeat everything that's in there, but it's pure hate. So any one of us, including Mr. Valencia, had choices to make. Either they could condemn it, as the mayor did, just let it go because we can't control people's feelings, they're in the community, there's a lot of ignorant people out there and they can do what they want to do. Or the third option is you could repost it, encourage it, like it, accept it. Wrong. That's just plain wrong. Mr. Valencia was elected to office, he was entrusted with this office. His job is to represent every single individual in our community, no matter what color their skin, no matter what their sexual preference, no matter what race, no matter ethnicity. All of us are elected to represent every single person. And to select someone, as the mayor said in his post that he posted himself, I vote a no on that guy. That guy. That's pitiful. Based on his race and his sexual preference. All of us up here have to answer to higher duty. Our city has been here over 130 years. During that time, we've always prided ourselves in being a community of diversity and embracing that diversity, no matter what background you come from. We've never had any accusations of racism, bigotry, anything else aimed at the city council or the city itself. We've always been proud of our city and the inclusiveness that we have and this places a cloud over the city council as well as the city of Ontario. I'm not going to allow Ruben Valencia or any of the haters on that website to represent our city for anything other than it is, and that's a city that treasures each and every person in the city. So now we have to deal with this cloud. This is the problem, when you have a member of the city council express things like Mr. Valencia did, what message are we sending to our community? Are we sending a message to the community that this city council are racist? They're intolerant? I don't want that message to go out. Certainly, I personally do not agree with what was going on. What message do we send to our employees? No matter what, race, sexual preference, anything else? Are we telling our employees that this council is indifferent to them, that they don't mean anything? That it's just a man, it's just a woman, that guy, that guy, that gal? We don't refer to employees in the city that way, nor do we refer to commissioners that we've appointed that way. What about the business community? What happens to economic development? What happens if one of the folks that do business in our city are offended by this, which I'm sure they would be? And you don't have to be gay to be offended about a gay comment. I'm certainly offended by that. You don't have to be black to be offended by a racist comment. We're all, we all hate that. So, you know, I don't know how far reaching the impact this is going to go. I also wonder, and you know, I talked to the city attorney, about what legal liability am I listening to? As a representative of the city, for Mr. Valencia to go out there and exhibit his racism and his bigotry and his homophobia? How do we know that his racist, bigot, whatever you want to call it, hasn't impacted any of the decisions or votes that he's made here? Don't know. But actually, we do know, we know that at least in the vote of a planning commissioner, it did impact it. And I don't think, Mr. City Attorney, that we can vote on somebody based on their race or their sexual preference or anything else. At least that's my understanding. We're talking about projected class. I'm also concerned about, you know, there's other, there's potential litigation out there or anything else. And if one of the issues happens to be race or sexual preference or ethnicity or culture and we now have pretty much a self-proclaimed racist, bigot, homophobe, I don't know what impact that can have to any of the city business. So finally, what I want to say is this, and yeah, I'm sure it's difficult, Mr. Valencia, to listen to this, but this is you, this is you. You posted that, you have to claim ownership of it. I have not heard, and I noticed, someone told me you took the post down, but I've never heard an apology from you to this community nor to the people that you've heard. No apology because you're not worthy of making an apology. I've never heard of a personal apology, I've never heard of a public apology. And I certainly think this community, this city deserves to hear from you, your apology for all the harm and hurt that you caused this entire community. I love this city, as I stated, this city is 130 years old. And we've all taken good care of this city. Never, ever, ever have I seen anything like this from anybody sitting on this dais. We've had, you name it, you've watched this council for many, many years and we've had them from all different types. Never, ever have we found someone like this that has absolutely no boundaries. I mean, whatever he needs to do to get power to run for office forever, no boundaries at all, no matter how many people are hurt, no matter, no matter what damage is done, as long as he gets the votes. Well, I know our community pretty well and I'll tell you, other than the haters on that website, I can't imagine anybody in this community who supports a racist bigot, homophobe or anything else you want to call it. It's just intolerable, it's not acceptable. And again, I, on behalf of the community, I have to demand that there be an apology made to the city of Ontario, to the individuals that were inflicted by this, and frankly, to your council colleagues, because now we're at the beer, the impact of basically your ignorance out there. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowman.
I've been taken aback by all of this and I was really set back too tonight with the speaker that came forward tonight and I just want to let everybody know and we get emotional and stuff like this, but I honor and respect everybody in this town and I don't care what race, religion, gender or sexual orientation that you have. I appreciate all of you, I appreciate your commitment to the city, I love working with you, you all make it a wonderful place to be at and I am so sorry that all this is going on. So you know that you have my support and we'll just take it from the hair cell. Thank you.
Well, now that I'm back to myself again, I'd like to tell you that we appreciate your interest. Thank you for participating in our meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.